All right, ready? On your Mac. Good evening and welcome. Are there any citizens' concerns?
Jim Snyder-Grant, West Acton. My question was about the 8:00 joint meeting with the Acton Water District Commissioners, and I didn't know if there would be a chance there for citizen comments that would go to both the Select Board and the Acton Water District Commissioners.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other citizens' concerns? Then I have some updates. On 9/11, there will be a ceremony at the Public Safety Facility, 371 Main Street, to commemorate the anniversary of 9/11. We lost two citizens that day, so it really is something that's important for us. Please arrive before the ceremony gets started at 9:55. And we are starting Acton's inaugural Restaurant Week on September 16th. We're excited to announce that the town of Acton will host its first Restaurant Week this month. And the restaurants will have special menus for that week. And on September 26th, we'll be celebrating the two-year anniversary with an open house at the Human Services and Senior Center Facility. The new 30 Sudbury Road location has been a tremendous asset for our Human Services Department and constituents. Several departments will have tables set up to provide information and answer questions, and a tour will be offered for those who have yet to see the facility. And on September 27th, the next day, town offices will be closed for the Annual Professional Development Day. And tonight, at 8:00 PM, the Board of Selectmen and the Water Commissioners will be having a meeting. John, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you. I'd actually like to start my update with some very sad news for our organization and our community. One of our firefighter paramedics, Luke Magnin, we are deeply saddened to learn that he passed away over the weekend. And he was a beloved member of the fire department, relatively new to the department, a very good-natured guy, always smiling, and we're our thoughts and prayers are with his family during this difficult time, and I just wanted to make sure the board is aware of that. And there will be arrangements. Once they're finalized, we'll let you know. But I just wanted to mention that Luke Magnin passed away over the weekend. Shifting gears to normal operational updates. Some other things going on in town this month. Town Hall hours, this summer, we started a pilot program to modify the hours to allow for a late Tuesday evening. It's worked out really well. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from residents, staff, and businesses that work with Town Hall. So we intend to keep it that way until further notice. We're also talking to some of the other buildings that operate in town to see if modifying the schedule would provide for opportunities for new programming, such as maybe the Human Services Building. Maybe that would allow them to offer some evening programs. Mosquito spraying, we've been working with the Central Mass Mosquito Control District to schedule a spraying for the athletic fields this Thursday. The school district is also doing spraying that night. More information on our website. West Acton Sewer Project, we announced several public forums that will be held this month and the next few months leading up to December Town Meeting. The project's schedule is set up in a way that's aligned to be able to provide a sewer connection to a new school building if it's approved, and if the town votes on the sewer project as well. There's a webpage set up for the sewer project for those that are looking for information. The Civil Defense Building, 3 School Street, at a recent meeting, the board voted to declare it surplus, as it's no longer needed for operational purposes. We're actually soliciting interest from the public for anyone that wants to buy that or acquire that property. And we issued that this week, and we've already received a handful of inquiries. So we'll come back to the board when we have that information to decide what the next steps may be. We finished the hazardous material abatement for the Asa Pollen House behind Town Hall. I'd love to walk you through there if you want to come by. It looks totally different with the wall boards all removed and the flooring removed. So we look forward to continuing that effort. I wanted to mention that Bettina Abe and a group of volunteers recently constructed a new boardwalk and canoe launch on the Asa Bet, and it's beautiful. They officially blessed it, or christened it, or whatever you do to new boardwalks last week. And it's a great recreational opportunity for the public, so I hope you can get out there. That is all for updates.
Okay.
Thanks.
So next on the agenda is the Acton Dog Park Committee. Claire?
Thank you for having us. This is the culmination of two years of work since the committee got started, and we look forward to presenting our findings and our recommendations for your consideration. Some of the material that we've got in here, some of you may have seen before, so we will try to go fairly quickly through the first part, but I'll stop if there are any particular questions. Wrong button, sorry. So first, myself, I'm the chair of the committee. To my right is Tom Galisby, who's going to help do the presentation. He's our vice chair. In the audience, Fred Kinch and Karen Martin, who have been working on the project ever since the beginning, and Mike Perry, who will be here later. We've been working very closely with Joan, who's our liaison. Matt Selby, the Director of Land Use and Economic Development, has been very helpful to us and continues to support the project. Tom Tidman, Natural Resources Director, and also the entire Acton Recreation Department and the Land Use Departments have been...
Thank you.
...have been involved and supportive and giving advice. So here's what we're going to be talking about tonight. Why a dog park for Acton? What we've done to date for the last two years, our site recommendation, the next steps, and what we're asking of the Board of Selectmen this evening. So first of all, why a dog park? Dog parks are places for both dogs and people. And who benefits from them? Everybody does. Dogs benefit, like people, like kids. They need to learn how to get along with others. They need exercise. They learn from others, and play is their learning. Statistics prove that well-socialized dogs are happier, they are better pets, and they're less likely to harm other dogs and people. We do have the support so far. I hope we'll get more, but we have support of two Acton veterinarians. You have letters in your packet from Powder Mill Animal Hospital and Acton Animal Hospital, who voiced their support for the project, and also loyal companion pet stores, who have endorsed the project and have... all of them have offered to help us raise money. So who else benefits from a dog park? Dog owners benefit. New dog owners learn from other dog owners. A lot of people get a dog, and they don't have any idea what they're getting themselves into, and then oftentimes, they get overwhelmed, and all of a sudden, the dog has been rehomed or sent back to a shelter. There's another thing, this is from the Huffington Post, there's a lot of physical things that happen when people take their dogs out. They get... they lose weight, they get physical fitness, so they have better heart health. Dogs are a social connection, they're an icebreaker. So rather than just walking your dog by yourself, you go to a dog park, and you meet other people, and you make social connections. Before you know it, you're exchanging leashes and playdates, and it lowers anxiety, it lowers your blood pressure, increases levels of serotonin and dopamine being around dogs, and that helps with calm and well-being. So it reduces stress, and it reduces rates of depression. Dog owners are less prone to depression than the dogless. And dogs just add meaning to people's lives. So it's not really in the presentation too much, but we have made the point in the past that you don't have to have a dog to come to the dog park. You can come and just hang out with dogs and be around them and not have any of the responsibility, just like being a grandmother. Give them back. Go and hang out. So the community benefits. Well-meaning people, as I said, purchased rescue dogs, and before you know it, they are being surrendered to shelters. Biting incidents decrease. In New York City, reported dog bites went down from 4,000... 40,000 to 4,000 after they started installing dog parks. Real estate agents report that homeowners find a dog park a plus when they choose a community. And users traveling to dog parks use coffee shops and gas stations and local shopping centers. So a dog park would be good for Acton. People... we don't have a dog park, and the people I know that want to go to the dog park, they travel to other towns. They go to Chelmsford, they go to Air, they go to Maynard, and they're spending money in those towns rather than here. If we have an interactive dog park, people will come here and spend their money here. So communities are recognizing the value of dog parks. You can see the stats up here, let's see, I think... did I skip a page?
I think you did.
Oh, sorry. This is about Acton's dog population. There have been... pretty steady, but it's about one dog for every 10 residents in Acton, about 2,000 licensed dogs. We don't know about the unlicensed ones. A lot of owners use existing town spaces to run their dogs off-leash, but not all dogs can be off-leash, and that doesn't mean that they are bad owners. But there are rescue dogs that are so lucky to have just found a home, but they have had no training, and they can't be off-leash. They need to be in a fenced area. Blind dogs, aging dogs, physically impaired dogs, certain breeds, just, you know, I don't want to name any breeds and get anybody upset, but there are certain breeds that are just really never going to be able to be off-leash without running and taking off. Puppies need to be confined. But, you know, frankly, not everybody in town lives in a nice house that has a big fenced yard. People live in condos, people live in apartment buildings. So, you know, it would be beneficial to them to have a place where their dogs can run free. They get a lot more exercise than they do if they're just on leash. And when dogs run free in those shared-use areas, such as Acton Alberitym and Great Hill, there'll be, you know, there'll come conflicts with people. People think that the poop isn't being picked up, or that they want to have a picnic, but there's dogs running all over the place. So, you know, we're trying to set up a place that is designated specifically for the dogs and their followers. So, communities recognize the value of dog parks. The amount of dog parks in the United States is growing rapidly. I just want... you guys can read all those... let's see, so there are... when I go to bringfido.com, you can get a name of over 80 dog parks in Massachusetts. In 2017, we did a survey, and 78% of our respondents supported the idea of creating a dog park in Acton, and that's why we're sitting here today. So this is just a list of all the towns in Massachusetts, and there are more, actually. This is, I think, 50 of them, that have dog parks. They are small towns, large towns, big cities, small cities. So why not have a dog park in Acton? We have a lot of recreational facilities in Acton. We have all these things. We've got playgrounds, baseball diamonds, community gardens, the list goes on, cricket fields, boat launches, we just got a new boat launch. We have 1,700 acres of conservation land. We have theaters and rail trails, but we do not have any dog parks. So I'll turn it over to Tom to talk about what we've done so far.
Great. Thank you, Claire. Again, thanks for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight and report back what we've been working on. It has been over two years since the committee was formed. So what have we been doing over the last year and a half since we last reported to you? Is first, turn the slide. So that's when we reported. We've been doing a lot of reviewing of research, a number of community outreach efforts, including the survey that Claire had mentioned, many discussions with a number of town committees that Claire highlighted in the introduction, but including the Commission on Disabilities, Open Space, Land Stewardship, Recreation Commission, CONSCOM, Acton 2020, Morrison, Healthy Acton, amongst others. Public events, including October Winter Carnival. The idea was to solicit the impact, solicit feedback, and understand the level of interest, and those have all been very positive. All of the feedback and the suggestions that we've received from people have been extremely supportive and looking forward to when this becomes a reality. We've also met with a number of the dog park representatives from other towns to learn what they have done, both good and bad, or, you know, positive and struggles they had. So we've factored that in over the past year and a half. And then, we did meet that year and a half ago, in terms of presenting to the board the justification, and then, at that point, to moving on and starting to look at the different locations. But first of all, you've got to find some money. And so, a quick review of where we believe the money for this project will come from, primarily Stanton Foundation. Perhaps you've heard that name before, but they are a substantial organization in the state of Massachusetts, will fund a dog park within a community up to $250,000, including... and then separately from that amount of money, also covering design fees at 100%. They do require that as part of the 250K funding, that there's a 10% matching fund that we'll talk about in a second as to how we cover. But this is really going to be the substantial amount... the amount... this is going to be the place that a substantial amount for the park funding comes from. Other towns have used the... sorry. The Community Preservation Funds to fund either that remaining 10% balance or other needs associated with the dog park. For instance, one of the things that Stanton requires is a source of potable water, primarily for dogs, but I guess for people, too. And so they do not cover the construction costs associated with bringing water to the site. So that might be a source of... you know, we'd have to look for a source of funding to cover that requirement associated with the Stanton grant. We do plan and have established a friends group, sort of in the early stages, but to raise funds and then the ongoing maintenance and upkeep for the park going forward. One of the things that we're going to be requesting from the board tonight is to consider an increase in the dog license fees, starting in the year 2020, and then also a one-time voluntary contribution appeal. We'll have a summary of this a little bit later, but the idea is approximately 2,000 dogs in the town that are licensed, raise the fees by $2 per license. That brings in about $4,000 annually. That would be a considerable amount for the ongoing maintenance and support of the dog park initially for this first year. Since we don't have maintenance on a nonexisting park yet, we would use those funds to help provide that 10% construction match that's required by the Stanton Fund. All right, so in addition to finding the money, we had to find the right spot. And so we started off with a list of multiple municipal parcels. We spent some time coming up with criteria. What did we need? And all of these criteria came from research, from talking to people, from talking to what other dog parks in other towns had done, and we started spreadsheets, and we started comparing properties against this set of criteria. A lot of work involved with that, but we really wanted to make sure that we considered each property that had come from the list of municipal properties. This was the list of 12 that we started with. I could go into tons of detail on each one, but trust that we looked at each carefully. We toured them with Tom Tidman, spent a lot of time evaluating each against the criteria. Continued to rule out sites, fairly quickly a bunch, and then debated over some more as we got down to the wire. And then finally, we did some community outreach for a few of the remaining sites, such as through-town committees, our email and Facebook pages, some meetings... I'm sorry, a booth at the farmer's market, and then a couple of days of pop-up tent at Great Hill, again, talking through some of these considerations of this finding the right spot. That sort of culminated in a public forum that we did a couple of months ago, fairly well-attended, lots of good feedback, lots of good discussion, fairly well-publicized. I think people got a chance to hear that this was being considered, and this was our primary source of feedback from the public through this forum. So what did we hear? Lots of support, you've heard that, but these were the concerns, probably makes sense in terms of, gee, is it going to be noisy? How much will it cost us? How do we keep it going? Dog poop always seems to come up as a topic of conversation, things like parking, safety, et cetera. Primarily, this is the big one that we heard, "Not in my backyard." So as we were looking through that list of municipal properties, evaluating them on the criteria that we had come up with, the one thing we didn't really strongly consider in there was the level of ejection associated with where that property was and the surrounding neighbors. So that brings us to the site recommendations.
Okay. So... I lost my train of thought. So looking at all of those and trying to find parcels that would meet the most criteria and raise the fewest concerns, and again, working with Matt Selby and other people in town, we... well, we found two locations that we felt would meet the criteria and would be... people would find acceptable. Interesting point that we've really dug into since we started getting into this, people don't want it close to their home, is that when we start looking at the dog parks in other towns, they're near solar farms, they're near railroad tracks, they're near firing ranges. They're just... they're in places that the land is considered less desirable. So... and I... no personal remark against our Municipal Properties Department. I'm sure that they desire... that they have their desires for their property, and they have their uses, but... so, but there are two parcels. Our recommended location is this small section, it's probably about two acres in total, of the DPW land north of Nara Park and next to the Miracle Field. My understanding is that that site is acceptable both to the Director of Land Use and to the town... with the town manager. If I've misspoken, you can stop me now. Our backup location is 70 Quarry Road, which is also near Nara Park, but there's a lower segment that we outlined in orange that was traded, I believe, with... there was a land swap when the Miracle Field came in, but so that the top portion is no longer available to us, so it would just be that lower portion that would be available. As you can see, that land is heavily wooded. It also has a lot of trails on it, but we'll talk about the pros and cons later. So back to the north of, what I call the North of Nara, the DPW land, there are a lot of advantages to it. It is preferred over the Quarry Road site by Tom Tidman, because I believe certainly a less environmental impact. It's buffered by... buffered from Nara, from a natural line of mature trees that we would hope to not impact. There is adequate space. We were looking for a minimum of two acres, including parking, which we've obtained with this space, and so we would be able to have both small and large dog areas. Nara is often used as an off-use... sorry, off-leash dog area, which it is not supposed to be, so it would take some pressure off. You know, people can drop off their kids at the playground and go run the dog. There is no tree clearing or environmental impact, to my understanding, and that was something that was really important to the Conservation Commission in particular. It is sufficient distance from residential areas, which is really important. There's room for a good-sized parking lot. There are restrooms at nearby Nara Park. There's the new facility that's going in next to the Miracle Field, which will have restrooms in it. The town water lines are nearby, so it wouldn't cost us, we hope, too much to get water into the park. And in terms of synergy with the users of the Miracle Field, we have been in touch with Lauren Rickert, who's one of the co-founders and program director for the Miracle Field. They welcome us as good neighbors, so long as we work with them, in terms of making sure that there's a buffer. There are some, you know, making sure that we're sensitive about tree clearing, make sure we put fences up, and just, in general, work with them on the design so that it's acceptable to them, as well as everybody else that wants to use the park. But there may be opportunities. There are dog parks that don't just exist and have dogs running in them, they do programming, they do fundraising events. We could potentially do programming with some of the users of the Miracle Field that might... it might be advantageous to them to engage with some therapy dogs sometimes. So there's a lot of possibilities there. So let's see. So those are the benefits of the North of Nara piece. I would like to point out, let's see, there are a couple of things. We had hoped to have a place that would have sidewalks nearby, so that you didn't have to drive to the park. That doesn't seem obtainable. It does reduce the DPW land size, but in the... by about two acres, but in the packet that I just handed out before the meeting, I was looking at the map of the entire site, and it appears to me, and I haven't verified this, but it appears to me that there is a segment on the most northernmost section that is not currently being used by the DPW, that if they needed to expand to take up the space that we're using, or that we would be using, that it looks like to me like there's some potential there. I understand that there is a huge amount of loam that is on this spot that would need to be moved. Apparently, that's... there's precedent for that, because they had to move loam for the Miracle Field. And my understanding from Selby's conversation with Cory York is that he said if the board approves this, then they will do whatever needs to be done, and they will make it happen. So, 70 Quarry Road, across the street from Nara Park, is also acceptable to the town manager and the Director of Land Use. It has significantly fewer advantages compared to the municipal property that we were just talking about. There is a huge environment... environmental... I'm sorry. Environmental impact in terms of tree removal, and also the cost of removing the trees, which would have to be borne by the people who are building the dog park, would substantially reduce the funds that we would have available to actually build the park. Did I skip the pros? Sorry. Again, I mean, like the other spot, there's a proximity to a trail network and to Nara. It does have adequate space. It's a little bit smaller than the area that we're looking at. Again, it takes pressure off of Nara as a dog-use area, also away from residential areas, and also have restrooms. There's natural shade with mature trees. We wouldn't have to take them all out, and they're nearby town water lines. Again, the cons are similar. There's no sidewalks, but it does also require clearing of trees. It's also close to the road. We are really concerned about safety. There's a limited area for parking, so people would have to park at Nara Park, and they would have to be crossing Quarry Road with their kids and their dogs to get to the park, which I think creates a dangerous situation, especially if a dog, you know, takes off and is running and... what?
Sorry.
Sorry. Neither site is centrally located, we've given up on that, and it's probably going to require some trail relocation. If the Board of Selectmen prefers this site, we will work with it, but it's not our first choice, and we don't recommend it particularly because of environmental and safety concerns. So Tom's going to talk about the next steps.
All right, so I have a number of next steps here. These are meant to give you a sense. They're not a complete timeline, but these are the things that we think are going to be next, once we have a site selected and can start moving forward. So we have an opportunity to meet with you tonight to get an approval for the site, should that happen tonight or at a subsequent Selectment meeting. We will have a fundraising campaign underway. We will start the CPA application, going through the list of CPA projects through the town like we did last year. We could start the Stanton Design Grant, since we have a site selection and we can start to draw... have a rough drawing. That's pretty much what you need to get going with the design grant. That would then... and we would have the monies associated with the 10% construction match, either through fundraising or through a CPA... a portion of the CPA grant, covering one way or the other. So it's a little bit unclear exactly when... So, it's a little bit unclear exactly when we would have that full 10% matched, but we could have things ready for the grant, such that when that 10% is ready, get that design grant in. Hopefully getting those design funds, and then moving ahead with a designer, we have a number that we've already spoken to preliminarily, that are in the area, that have experience, I think they would meet the criteria. Then start the actual construction grant application to Stanton, hopefully receive those funds, and then go out for a bid for the construction associated with that, with a selection of contractors, et cetera. It's tight, but it's doable, potentially, that we could begin construction before the end of next year, if we get through the various next steps. So what are we asking for tonight? First, again, hopefully tonight, if not at a later meeting, to approve our site recommendation for that DPW land that Claire outlined. We would like an improve, an approval, again, hopefully tonight, or at a subsequent meeting, for a $2 increase in that dog license fee, with a one-time appeal for voluntary contributions, since there is a mailing that's done, associated with the renewal of the dog licenses, it's a great opportunity to put a one-time opportunity in there, to sort of, as a part of the fundraising efforts that we had talked about. We do anticipate that CPA project, we don't think it's going to be a very large project, because the bulk of the funds are going to be coming from the Stanton Grant, but associated with the added 10%, or some contingency funds, or again, funding associated with getting the potable water to the dog park. And then, supporting, should that go forward, supporting that application eventually at next April's town meeting. And then, of course, continued involvement with all the town committees that have been so helpful and so supportive along the way, and, especially in terms of the land use folks, and the natural resources and engineer, recreation, we have tapped some of the engineering and public works expertise for helping us with some of the early designs that we were doing for some of those properties, showing them at the farmer's market and at the Great Hill pop-ups, for example. And we would look to use as much of those in-house resources as is appropriate, or in conjunction with the town manager's advice and support on that. So those are the set of things that we're asking for tonight.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? Dean?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm quite concerned with the proposal for your primary site, in that the existing Public Works yard up there is critical infrastructure for the town. When people drive by and they look at it and they say, oh, it's just a pile of dirt. But every single project Public Works Department does is dependent upon that site. Processing gravel, storage of pipes, guardrails, stone, all of our existing green recycling operation, leaves and grass and all that, that's, that's processed and composted, material brought in from down the transfer station, all goes on there, storage of logs, deposit of materials such as, as asphalt materials that need to be reprocessed, all of that happens At one point, there was a second spot available, which was on top of the old landfill, which was lost when they put in the solar field. And then, this existing site has been impinged upon somewhat by the Miracle Field, so it keeps getting smaller and smaller. The, there are no alternate spots that I know of. If you think it's hard to find a place to put a dog park, try to find a place to put a DPW storage yard, it's a lot harder. The, I drove up there today, just to refresh my memory from my years on staff here, and, you know, and there are piles of loam and, and gravel and that kind of material, 30 feet high over the entire site. And all of the processing and all of the really kind of unpleasant processing work that goes on for Public Works operations, all occurs there. So, I frankly cannot support your primary site. I think the secondary site appears to be more than adequate. Yes, there will be some tree removal, but there's tree removal in this town all the time. I think that it's sufficiently close to existing parking for Nara Park. I frankly don't feel that there's a huge safety hazard, because Quarry Road is not a high-speed roadway, the dogs are supposed to be under control of the owners anyhow. That site, your secondary site actually was considered at one point to put our senior center in, so I know it's been reviewed, to a certain extent, by Conservation already. So, I think that losing any more land from that DPW yard is going to impact financially every single taxpayer in town, because if you don't have sufficient site for that, every teaspoonful of sand or gravel or loam that you need to bring in ends up having to be purchased from someplace else, as opposed to being processed here. And the, the log operation and the composting operation, I mean, this is some very important green things that we're supposed to be doing, and we're mandated to do by, by the state law, to process that kind of green material. So, at this point, I would be supportive of your secondary site, but I cannot support any more loss of space in the existing DPW yard.
John?
The town certainly needs a dog park, and I'm in support of it. My question to John Manjirati and town staff, given what Dean Charter just stated about his reservations, our opposition to the DPW site, are those concerns, you know, recognized by?
Yes, and just to clarify, I think Corey, both Corey and I both said that a decision like this, we would defer to the Board of Selectmen, and do what you believe you'd like to do. But there are challenges with, with, with regards to reducing the size of the DPW yard, there are challenges associated with access, but those are all things that we would work through, if the board decided that that's what we should do.
How would you see working things through if they're losing, essentially losing their site, their work area? Where would they do it?
Well, we, we would, I can, I can make a report on that for you, if that would be helpful, I wasn't prepared to, I didn't realize you were going to be making an approval tonight, one way or the other.
I don't know if, I don't know if we are, but the concern I had, Dean raised some very fair concerns about Atkins', and there was some indication that you and Corey were comfortable giving up that.
No, I, I wasn't asked to approve it. I've certainly been supportive of all that work that this group has been doing, they've done a great job, this presentation is tremendous, and I want to continue to be supportive, but I'm not in a position to approve a project like this, but I support your decision.
Am I allowed to make a comment?
Sure.
And I, I certainly didn't mean to speak from you, and I, and I wish that Selby were here, my understanding was that he was going to be here. He, it's like a he said, she said. The word that we got from Selby is that he had approved these sites, that he had run these sites by you, and that you were okay with them, so I apologize if I misspoke.
Yeah, I'm certainly supportive of you bringing it forward to the board.
Okay, but there's, there's a second comment I'd like to make, and, and you, you probably, I'm sure you know that site a lot better than I do. My understanding is that the work that you're referring to is not done in that spot, that that spot is, is used to store loam, and that the work about the processing of all those things is done in a different area of the site, and that Corey's concern, and again, Corey's not here, that, that the area that we are asking for, the parking area is, is used, it has trees right now, so there's certainly no processing going on there, and my understanding is that on the site that we're asking for, which is 1.3 acres, it is strictly used to store loam, and is not used to process any materials. And I would like to add, I mean, I would like to point out on the map, there is substantial area, certainly larger than the site that we're asking for, at the top, at the north end of the property, that doesn't appear to me to be being used by the DPW. So I, I just need to make those counter arguments.
Peter?
I think it would be helpful to have a report, I mean, I can go, I know it exists, I haven't even really gone by it, but I can go out and look at it, but it'd be nice to know what the total area is, and what plans the DPW might have to shift storing their loam, which isn't important, you need space to do that kind of thing, you know, to another area of the property, like, like, like the committee's suggesting, so if we could get that information, it would be helpful, I think. Let me, do you have a pro forma for, have you considered the total cost of construction, constructing the parking lot and the dog park?
A lot of it is driven by that maximum amount coming from Stanton, of around 250K. We've thought through some pro formas by talking with other towns, how much did you spend? We've communicated with a couple of designers, again, that have experience with this, and without obviously getting a complete design, but said, should we be able to do an approximately two-acre fenced-in area with some parking for the $250,000? And they all indicated yes. That obviously you have to work through the details, et cetera, but we felt that that was enough of an indication to go forward. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so you, you might be asking the CPC just for the 10% match, is that?
Yeah, so frankly, we haven't really discussed this yet completely, but I envision perhaps a not-to-exceed amount, 50K, which would certainly cover the 10%, if the fundraising was not covered, it would uncover some contingencies, which we did have there last year, and probably the cost of the water hookup. And if we ended up spending less, I'm sure that CPC won't argue with that.
And certainly if we, if, as we ramp up our fundraising efforts, if we, you know, the more money we can get, the less we ask for from CPA.
Yeah.
Hey, do you know where the dog, dog license fee is now?
Um, yes, the, for a non-altered dog, it's $20, for an altered dog, it's $15. If you're 70 years of age and own a dog, you do not have to pay a fee.
Well, I guess we get out of paying our fee this year, huh? So, well, that's, so that's a minimal increase, but you, so you're going to raise this $4,000 by that, and use it for maintenance, who's going to maintain the park? I mean, you, depending on town staff to maintain the park?
Um, we haven't gotten that far yet. So preliminary discussions were, there was some reception to that, when Kathy Fockman was on our, was liaison to the committee, she indicated, you know, there's a certain amount of town resources used for some of the other recreation areas in town, and, and we might be able to help support some of that. So, the sense was that it was doable, and then with a, you know, friends of the dog park committee as well, we would expect to have folks involved in that, taking shifts and helping some things as well.
I would also, another impetus, I would say, for asking for the increase in dog park fees, is we, we know that there is sensitivity on citizens' parts, who will say, you know, I don't spend my taxes on, you know, don't raise my taxes to pay for something I'm not using. So we felt that this was a targeted tax for the people who, you know, who do have dogs. There are a number of things that people also do, that, you know, the, in Sandwich, they have a lot of visitors, so they have, they have a box with envelopes, and people from out of town, you know, maybe they make a donation that way. But I would, you know, this, again, Tom says is very preliminary for us, but I would assume that there would be some sort of a fund that would be set up through the Recreation Department, that money would go into, and that the town would end up be the one that would be spending it, because it would be things like fence repair and stuff like that. We hope that we would not be creating a tipping point, we know that that's a possibility, but there are going to be things like trash removal and snow plowing, I think those are the two main maintenance things that we would be concerned about.
Okay, I mean, I think that kind of user fee kind of thing makes a lot of sense, if you're going to try to, you'd have to, if you had a CPC grant, you'd have to sell at the town meeting, so I just wanted to thought, I mean, you, you mentioned rifle ranges, there is a rifle range right next door to there. We, we have a dog that goes berserk whenever it thunders, and we can't even hear the thunder, the dog knows it's coming. So I don't know if you consider whether that might impact the dogs.
It was a, it was a new piece of information for us recently, but, you know, listen, we had other sites that we liked originally.
Yeah, also the Maynard, the Maynard Dog Park is fairly close to the, the Maynard facility, and so I imagine for some people it would be a detriment, and they'd just have to self-select out of it. So, yes, but we could not find a silver bullet par, parcel in this town.
And we went, you know, we worked with people through the town for two years, I don't think any of the other sites are going to be acceptable to people. So this is what we're down to.
Okay, thank you, thanks for all your hard work.
David?
Hi, thank you for your, your presentation. I just wanted to clarify, on your, the diagram of the main site, the orange area versus the yellow area, is the parking versus the park itself, is that correct?
No, that, that, I had to monkey with that image, because when you go on the town GIS, not that one?
Not that one, the DPW.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, totally different. This was just a rough sca, very rough area that Selby marked out for us. The yellow area on the right would actually be the dog park, which would be divided into small and large dog park, and the, the orange spot is an approximation of where parking might go, the shape of it, the contour, the size exactly is, you know, to be designed.
Right, that, that's what I thought, thank you. And I know you said that there's, there's no sidewalk nearby, but it's, if it's this side, it's not out of the question that there would be a spur from the rail trail?
Correct.
You're right, you're absolutely.
Yes, that's not far.
Right, it's right there, it goes right by, yeah.
What is the, the result of, of the design, does it look like a landscape design?
Yes, it's quite professional, and they also will do the complete construction drawings, so that, you know, they're ready to hand to people that are making bids, and then ultimately people that are doing the work.
So, the elements that would be included in that are water stations, trash stations, fencing, double gates, to let the, so that the dogs don't escape as they're going, benches, shade elements, whether they be natural or constructed, handicapped accessible walkways, there would be a determination of what would we use for ground cover, which is, there's a lot of different ground covers that need to be concern, considered, what else am I missing?
It's a bunch of them.
Oh, and dog poop bag stations, of course.
Do you expect that the town would need an appropriation for this? It sounds like no, but...
I, my understanding, we've tossed around that idea a bit, my understanding is no, but I think it's a legal question, that we would want to make sure. I mean, it is municipal land, would it need to be right redesignated as recreation? I don't know.
And, and who would do the contracts for this? Do the town do the contracts? You know, when you go to buil, build it, I, after the design is done, who?
I would think so. For the Stanton application, Stanton requires a town person to be the liaison with Stanton. Selby has nicely volunteered to do that, he's familiar with that process, so we think that that could all fall into place. And then, once we got to bidding and actual construction work, I imagine there are some town resources that could be used for that, with, you know, a bunch of work through the committee as well.
As, as far as maintenance goes...
I don't know, it's the first time we built a dog park, so.
No, no, I, I understand, I, my expectation is that the town would have to do the contracts, but I would just, seeing whether Stanton did them, or what the deal was.
No, no, I think the town would, especially because this is a committee of the town, so there's a, there's a connection there, it's not a separate entity.
And we would certainly assume that we would be involved, you know, right through to the end, but, you know, we'd have to go out through a bid process, just like anything else in town.
As far as maintenance goes, have you added up the costs for maintenance yourself? And, because my, my question is, is 4K enough? I suspect that it's not, and so I was wondering if you guys have just done a, you know, we expect plowing to cost this, and we expect fence repair to cost that, and whatever.
That's a number that we've got from talking to the other dog parks in the neighboring towns, is that about $4,000 is what they're spending? I, I can't say that that's exactly what it's going to be, but it's, it was a round-area number to work with.
And in addition to what you mentioned too, there's mowing, obviously.
If you have grass, but a grass field is probably going to turn into mud, I think we're probably looking at something. probably looking at something more like pea stone or crushed stone or even shredded wood. What do you call that? Mulch. There's a lot of other options, but I, it's very doubtful. The Chelmsford Dog Park often goes offline because they plant new grass and it doesn't have a chance to settle in and then it gets destroyed.
And, and finally, it's not, not a question, just a, a statement, but that maybe when we get closer to making decision, I mean, I could do this informally myself. I mean, I'd be interested in going out to the site and, and, and seeing the, the sites. And I can just drive up there too, but I don't know if there wants to be something more formal, but.
Okay. We have about ten minutes because the water commissioners are coming in at eight, so I'd like to take public comment at this point. Please come to the mic. Can you turn it? Yeah.
I started taking notes, so I hope I get, makes sense. But first of all, I wanna say it is in our backyard. And we approve it. We approve it heartily. And we also approve NARA. And in fact, I wrote an article for the local newspaper approving NARA. And I love what's happening up there. And yesterday, my husband and I walked part of the Bruce Freeman Trail. And I walked it when it was a railroad track. And I am delighted at how that is used. I would say that a lot of people who use it are from out of town. And that's one consideration that you ought to think of in the dog park, is a way of getting extra funding. If people use it, they pay more. But one thing I wanted to say is that, as far as the area goes, we've been paying taxes in this town, our family, since nineteen forty-five. So I, which is probably older than most of the people in this room. So we know something about the area. And I know very well the area. And frankly, it's a very big area. And it can be consolidated. It can be consolidated. And I think that, as I call Cory, the new Dicky, is a wonderful, wonderful supportive guy. He said, he thought it was quite nice. So that's what he told me. And I am very much for it. I wanted to say that the other site, frankly, we've seen a terrific loss of trees in North Acton. I can't begin to tell you, between the digital insulate and Avalon and so forth. I would pray to God you wouldn't lose any more trees. And also, it'd be a much more difficult site to use. And as far as people crossing the road, as you know, we drive up and down that road all the time. And people think it is not a road. We have to watch out all the time for children and dogs, dog care. And by the way, we get dirty looks from people, as though, you know, what are you doing here? So the point is that having that, I think that secondary site would be very poor, very poor. One other thing I wanted to say was that we know very well the dog park in Cambridge, Massachusetts, which I didn't see on that site, but it is fabulous. The people who use dog parks police them. They police the parks. In the wintertime, when the water's turned off, people bring in water. They, they walk around, my own husband walks around and picks up the very, very rare case of a dog mess that somebody may have missed. So I think dog owners usually are responsible for the site and they treat it well. The other thing I wanted to say was that I think that the whole NARA park is a, is a, really a full-service facility. And that Bruce Freeman Trail is a wonderful addition. Of course, the Miracle Field is fabulous. We are in ourselves giving a piece of land to the town as an arboretum in honor of our son, which will be fairly close to that area. And I think a dog park is the one thing that's missing. So I hope you go for it. I guess that's all I wanna say.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Fochman, eighteen Wright Terrace. I'd like to just say a few words in support of the dog park proposal. I'm the former Recreation Director, so I've spent many nights attending the meetings. Since my retirement in February, I've continued to participate. And I'm very much in favor of this proposal. And I intend to continue to support the committee. I would like to help them with their fundraising efforts. And just want to offer my experience in terms of undergoing a municipal construction project. I can certainly lend my support. So thank you. And I do ask for your support for this proposal.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Lauren Mercart. I'm one of the founders of the Miracle League and the builder, one of the builders of the Miracle Field. First off, the dog committee has come to us and spoken with us, and we've been able to voice our concerns, and we very much appreciate that. And they've talked about working us, with us, with the design, and that's fabulous. And we greatly appreciate that, cause I know that you guys wanna make it best for both the dogs and for us. I just wanted to say, you used the word that we welcome the park. And I, as a resident, totally welcome a dog park to Acton. I think that's fabulous. I would love to have one here. We just do have some concerns that some of our kids are like irrationally afraid of dogs, for whatever reason. Just, I mean, it seems like there's a disproportionate number of the kids that, you know, versus typical children that are irrationally afraid of dogs. And so I just fear for them. They will either be like cowering in the dugout, or like not even getting out of the car because they hear the dog barking. The other piece is, a lot of our kids are highly distractible. And if they're hearing dogs barking, we've talked about not being able to see them, but having some fencing, which is fabulous, cause seeing them, you know, forget it, we would definitely lose them. I could just picture, like, at some of our games, all the kids lined up at the dugout, not the dugout, sorry, the outfield fence, just staring like, where are the dogs at? You know, like, where's that noise coming from? And again, we're gonna work design-wise with them. It's just, I just wanted you to know some of the negative aspects of having it there to, you know, our children that have very limited places that they can play. And this is, you know, one of the only ones in Acton. So I just wanted you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Cynthia Highland on Ellsworth Village Road. I am not a supporter of this. I'm not a, a violently, violently opposed to it, but I really question the need. And I think the presentation was very nice, but it was really fuzzy. You talk about, I would hope that our town boards and committees would be supportive of people doing research and trying to create a program like this. But I think there's a difference between being supportive of, of the committee and supporting the project. I guess, I guess I would really like to know if any of you have, have seen data that would convince you that a majority of people want this. You know, one of, there's the results of the, the survey were that seventy-eight percent responded positively. I think that's what you said? You know, seventy-eight percent of what? I, I just, I just don't see the need. I am concerned about all kinds of things. The, you know, it sounds as though the town will be seeking bids for, oops, excuse me, for the work that would be done. I mean, it sounds like the town is gonna end up owning this and being responsible for it. Even if, you know, we have, well, I guess if we, our dog license fees are helping to fund it. I mean, it's, it's not a private thing. It's a town project. And, you know, I don't know if the town self-insures. I don't know if you'd have to get another insurance policy. No one's said anything about town council and his or her opinion. No one's said anything about the dog officer or the animal officer. I just think there are a whole lot of questions about this. And I would urge you to, to seek more information before you make a decision. Thanks.
Thank you.
If I could add just one comment?
Yeah. We have only a couple of minutes, so I'd like to take the public comments.
Okay. So many of those questions, we in fact have materials on. Can provide that to the board.
Go ahead, please, and speak.
Hi. I'm Rand Bonteleoni from, on Lincoln Drive. And I have a dog, but I don't think my dog would use a dog park, but I see the dog park as a wonderful resource for the town. I, around the Andover Dog Park a lot. It's, it's a wonderful place. You know, I think a dog park is, is a fantastic resource for a town. I appreciate all the, the work the committee has put into this. And I love the proposed site of the, you know, north of NARA. I, I am concerned about the, the secondary site. Unless the DPW needs really push it to the secondary site, I would love to see the proposed site go forward. I have been around dog parks and I generally do not hear barking dogs. You know, like, they're not loud. They're just happy places, socializing. I think it's a wonderful resource for the town.
Thank you. Thank you.
Adeline Apunasku, Five Minot Avenue. I'm a first-time dog owner. I am traveling to different dog parks because I'd like my dog to socialize with other dogs. Most of the dogs parks that I've seen, I've never heard barking or, you know, disturbances. I can support primarily the first option, like the others said, if the DPW doesn't really, really need that, in which case I understand. I would prefer not to have the trees removed, for the reasons that others spoke in the same manner. There's lots of trees that have been removed in Acton. I have also kids. Kids love animals. I think it's a good thing to have an interaction between kids and, and animals. I think it raises both the kids as well as the families and dogs in a better environment. That's my opinion. And for the committee, I am willing to help with in any way I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Amy Barber, and we live on Main Street, right across from the Public Safety Building. My family and I have a dog. And since we live on Main Street, we have taken our dog to other towns so we can exercise our dog at different dog parks. And it becomes a bit of an inconvenience that we actually have to leave our own town in order to bring our dog to socialize with other dogs. Granted, yes, we walk around the arboretum and elsewhere, but it would be a true asset to, I believe, everybody. And if you don't want to go to the dog park, simply just don't go. But I think it is a great asset to our town.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Wolf, Sawmill Road in Acton. In Claire's presentation, she showed some dog ownership numbers for the town. I think it was one in ten, one dog per about ten people. There's your audience. That's any, any town facility that can service one in ten people, that's, that's pretty strong evidence that there is a, a need for a park to serve dogs. As far as the North Acton location, being a resident in North Acton and a dog owner, I would really love to see this next to NARA Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Carol Shapazian. I'd just like to know what the approval process is for the dog park. Is this something that the board approves? Is this go-to-town meeting? You are, if you, if you decide to proceed committing a significant amount of town property, and that property has value. So there conceivably could be alternative uses for the property, either now or in the future. So this is presumably a significant commitment of resources. It's a couple of acres. I don't know what a couple acres is worth, but it's worth probably some sizable amount of money. So I wanna know what the approval process is. Is that a question you can answer now?
The board would approve this, right, John?
The use of the land for a dog park may not, may not require a transfer of ownership because it's both two town entities. Any funding that would be needed may, would require town meeting vote unless it's funded through other means. But I don't know exactly what, if they approve, if they seek, or if we seek a CPC application, that requires town meeting approval. So there are a number of approvals that would come into play for a project like this.
The alternative question, and obviously, there's a lot of supporters here for the dog park. You know, the Board of Selectmen is supposed to be representing the interests of all the residents of the town. The question that I would ask is, does, does the majority of the people who live in Acton, are they supportive of the dog park? And maybe the answer is yes, maybe the answer is no. But you have no way of knowing unless it goes to a town vote. And I, I don't know the appropriate, so you may have the legal capability of approving this. The question is, is what's the appropriate input? If you're hearing from dog owners who, you know, put forth a case for the benefits, do you also wanna hear from people who are not dog owners? And you are supposed to be looking out for the interests of everyone in town. So I would recommend to you this go to a, a vote in some kind of forum, whether that's town meeting or some other kind of vote. You are, you would be committing land for use to a certain population of people.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks to the committee. I know how hard they've worked since I've been the liaison and heard the discussions and toured some of the sites with them. But at this point, we need to move on to the meeting with the Water District. So thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you for your time. Sorry for the delay. Right. I wanna welcome Chris and the commissioners. Could you please introduce yourself?
Chris Allen, District Manager.
Barry Rosen, Water Commissioner.
Steve Stunts, Chairman of the Water Commissioners.
Erica Emirlin, Commissioner.
Thank you very much for coming here. We usually both meet on this night, and so we don't have a chance to talk to each other very often. So I appreciate your willingness to come before the board. Now, I think it was last September, almost a year ago, we had a water forum here in this room, and a lot of issues were discussed. Do you wanna lead off the discussion with?
I was not at the forum, so one of my colleagues here. Or do we wanna take that, or do we wanna take questions? Let's, I mean, we're, to be honest, we're a little Let's, I mean, we're, to be honest, we're a little bit of a loss of how we can help move the conversations and the relationships forward.
Okay. John?
So, hello, thank you all for joining us tonight. I think the Water Resource Advisory Committee made a, in addition to the workshop that was held over the last year, a series of recommendations were presented to the board earlier this summer. And those recommendations included suggesting that the town engage in a long-term planning process to understand sort of our long-term water needs, conduct other staff research projects to better understand some of the challenges associated with water supply. And all those activities are perfectly aligned with your mission here and the services you provide to our community. So I think one of the first things that the board said is we need to get the Water District in here so that we can start this conversation and make sure that anything that the town starts out, that we do it in step with you, whether it's a formal collaboration or just simply a communication channel established so that if we're talking about long-term water needs, you've already done master planning and you updated it on a periodic basis. So I think the efforts that we would want to pursue, we don't want to duplicate those efforts. So we just want to make sure that you understand that's what's been recommended. And if there's any initial comments or thoughts based on those recommendations that you have, I think that would be a great way to start the conversation. Or if there's information from the master plan that you think is responsive to those recommendations, maybe that would be a good way to start. But generally, we just wanted to have a joint meeting and get together, talk water.
Okay, well, let me back up a little bit. The, as a idea, our demand for water over the last decade has been pretty flat, below our permanent levels, about 10% below our permanent levels. We've been able, through education and the other work of conservation, to handle all the town's growth without impacting what we can and cannot produce. So we feel fairly comfortable with that. We have, for a number of years, worked under our master plan, which is a 10-year plan that's updated every five years. That gives us an idea of where we're going. And it's a technical plan. In other words, where do we need pipes? Where do we need treatment plants? What do we need for this or that? So it's a working document for us in terms of continuing to provide the water we need for public health for safety. So we have that level of basis of understanding of what we're doing and we can continue to do that. I think the, one of the things that we're proud of is the continuing efforts we've made in conservation in terms of education of everybody. And part of it, the RAC, is continuing that process. I think the best indication of success in education is when things happen that are right. In 2016, we had a substantial shortage after a drought and we called our customer base to stop using water outside totally. And within a day or two, the demand had dropped 20%. So they, we have ways of communicating with them. We have even better ways now. And we feel fairly confident that the people listen when we ask them to. The rest of the time, they just turn on the tap and go about their business. David, you had some specific questions you wanted, that you passed on to John. Why don't you ask them and then we can answer them?
Sure, yeah. You know, I also note that, as you did, that the, our consumption of water is flat or maybe even declining a little bit over the past, recent couple of years. Am I correct in understanding that the, looking for other sources of water is more to be prepared in case of a crisis or maintenance and things like that? Or do you see growth coming in that is going to cause increase of consumption?
No, we are, the permitted level is the average daily demand over a whole year. What, the usage is in July and August and a lot of outdoor watering. And so the peaks and valleys, so it's a surge kind of problem that we have. And not to mention, of course, we have been through prior times when we had to shut a well down for pollution. And so we would like to have the reserve capacity. So it's both. But really, right now, we're comfortable with the ongoing base level design.
That's kind of basically what my understanding. I have read most of the master plan. It's a long document with a lot of numbers in it. But I appreciate that. The, it lists a number of potential future sources of water. In my reading of it, it doesn't really have a preference for those sources. It lists the possibilities from bringing old wells back that may have, you know, high iron or manganese content and, you know, treating that water or bringing the West Acton well, which hasn't been used a long time back in service, to buying water from the MWRA to pumping out of Nagakban. It lists a number of things. Have you guys discussed a preference for those? You know, you know, have you rank ordered them? I didn't see that really in the document. You know, you're going to go after, you know?
The permitting process for a well is five years or more. And so the, when, well, there's two things going on. Right now, they're in the process of updating all the permitted levels. And that was due out in 2015. And so we're still working on old numbers. So the first thing that's going to happen is they're going to tell us new numbers. If we were running out of water on a regular basis, we would go to them with a certificate of need, try to talk to them. And then we would start ranking based on cost, where treatment plants were and that kind of stuff. But there's no, you would only rank order when you start spending money, I guess is the way I'd phrase it. And so until then, we know what the choices are. We've looked casually at what hook it up the MWRA is and we think about running a major pipeline up from Marlboro up the 495 and connecting it. And we say, you know, that's pretty big. Then we find out what the cost of water is. And that's bigger than what we're paying now. I don't have a number of how much it was. Was it twice the raw water, the rate cost?
Yeah, I mean, connection to MWRA is in excess of $30 million baseline. And it's all on the town, whomever desires to get water from MWRA. They don't really assist you in any way. Capacity generically, I would say, is limitless from them. They have about 300 million gallons per day is what their capacity is. And they have a significant amount of that that's being unused currently. The problem is for us getting the water to that, to Acton. There is no abutting community that has adequate supply for themselves and for us. Bedford is the closest. They have partial supply. Lexington is fully supplied but doesn't have enough, as they call it, pipe diameter hydraulic supply to supply them and an additional community, notwithstanding all the inter-community politics that would have to go on to get a pipe running across Concord or Carlisle or wherever. The 495 corridor from Marlboro is probably the most viable. But that means tearing up 495, putting up probably a minimum of 24-inch diameter pipe in the roadway, probably picking up several public water supplies along the way. Bolton, Stowe, Boxborough, obviously have to get buy-in from those communities and the potential of cost sharing could occur. We examined this back in 2015, or 2013, I should say, right before we started construction on the South Acton Water Treatment Plant. We looked seriously at MWRA. Do we want to make a $15 million investment in the treatment plant? Or do we want to look at alternative water source? Just from a new source perspective, it's just a prudent thing to do in our industry. Obviously, we want to maintain the ability to support Acton and its growth. So we do continually look for areas of new source. Priority is a bird in hand. We currently have a permitted well on W.R. Grace property called Asa Bait 3. It doesn't give us any expanded permitted capacity. It just gives us a source redundancy. That well is currently inactive, but that is a bird in hand. Currently has about half a pot per billion of 1,4 dioxide in it at last pumping test, which is in 2008. We're currently strategizing as to how we want to manage to check that well. Basically, pump it, check the drawdown levels, check the water quality, et cetera. We look at the Massachusetts Ave well, which as we call the Flannery O'Toole, land gifted to the district many years ago. That would potentially come online where there are treatment plant built in West Acton at our current Clappin-Wickham site, which is at our main campus off 111. That probably would be part of that larger project. Water quality and yield is very similar to what we currently have, medium to low yielding. Water quality, it's an overburdened well, iron and manganese, just the generic stuff that we're pretty used to. But that's probably 10 years down the line. We're currently preparing to build iron and manganese removal plant in Acton Center for the Conant sources, Conant 1 and 2, and that's behind Post Office Square, behind the Associated Environmental Systems Building. That'll be a one MGD facility, so additional capacity above and beyond the two sources that we're currently supplying it. So that is in preparation for an additional source to be added to that. We also have expansion capacity in the South Acton Water Treatment Plant. It's a 1.7 MGD, million gallon per day facility, expandable to 2 million gallons per day. So that is specifically designed to accept the Asa Bait 3 well, when and if it is supplied to the circuit. So we do have inherent expansion in our capacity to supply currently. But prudent planning in this industry from a water supply perspective is you're always looking at new source. Typically, you would look at land you currently own or land that's available. So those are kind of the way you prioritize it, is it land that's accessible and you are able to acquire. You also look at surrounding uses, how vulnerable it is and what the potential pitfalls could be. And those are the kind of things that you use to prioritize new source.
Yeah, so it sounds like the proposed plant in Acton Center is additional capacity because you're rejuvenating a well which has, you would otherwise probably not use because it has a lot of iron and manganese.
Yeah, the Conant 1 well is typically been relegated to, we call peak demand offset. So we typically would use it in the summertime during areas of high demand. It does have high levels of manganese in it, as well as the Conant 2 well. So those two wells will be fed to the central Acton Water Treatment Plant for specifically that purpose, iron and manganese removal, just to meet regulatory compliance.
So it sounds like you're, when I was talking earlier about rank ordering the sources, it's, a lot of it has to do with the cost, including everything, you know, getting the water to here and treating it however you have to treat it. I wasn't at all advocating for MWRA water because also that's a different, you know, I think actually the master plan alludes to the fact that mixing water sources has its own problems.
It does.
So.
Yeah, so not to withstand the fact that obviously own source gives full ownership to the community and the people therein. Once you join an authority like MWRA, you become a small fish in a very big pond. And you subsequently lose a lot of decision-making and that's sort of taken out of the hands of the town or whatever the supply is.
Other than the regular updates to the, your master plan, are there other studies and things that you have in progress or envisioned?
There've been studies that have been done, source protection, different types of capacity studies, resource, more on a holistic scale, vulnerability type assessments that have been done. And we are presently applying for a grant for asset management, which is a little bit more tactical. So a horizontal and vertical asset management program that would give us the ability to manage our assets from down to the component level. So every component within a treatment plant, as well as the pipes that are buried in the road, the hydrants, the valves, it's all encompassing. So that's something we're currently applying for. That's a, we'll find out next January if we earn an award, awardee of that grant.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
We also have our own advisory committee, WMAK, and they review plans for us that they'll take a look at. They'll take, well, that's a sensitive thing. The WMAK takes a look at new projects and things like that. So we tend to do the studies as needed on a project-by-project basis. We'll look at, there's the units going in over, I'll call it, where last national wine is. You can sort of see what my focus was over there. So we look at those projects. And any developer has to put in the water impact study for the system. So it tends to be more local, impacts on the mechanics of the system.
No, I'm just wondering, I mean, Barry, you're a member, you were a member of Water Resources, right? I mean, it doesn't, I don't, I'm getting a disconnect here between Water Resources' proposal to do this 50-year study, as I understand it, to ensure that there's enough water in Acton to supply all the future development that's going to happen over the next 50 years. And they're asking for your support. I guess I'm, my question to you folks is, is that something that you think we need? And how would you support it? And how would you use it?
I think we generally would welcome the chance to make water an issue in town that is more emphasized and gets more proactive attention at a town scale. So in that regard, the RAC study could potentially be an instrument of a lot of good.
My question was the same as Peter's. Would it, would this projected 2050 report be something that would be useful to you people? And would you embrace it and support it? And from Erica's comment, yes, it is. And I take it Steve and Barry and Chris, you all support it as well?
Yeah, I think, sort of as an organization, obviously, we, this is kind of our bible. This is our master plan update. This does take into consideration a lot of things related to capacity, new source, current source, distribution system, and just kind of a whole myriad of our water supply-related items. I think the one thing that we've discussed and sort of are on the same page related to is we'd like to see the Water Resources study be more holistic. I think right now it's focused a lot on drinking water, capacity, availability. I think from a holistic standpoint, we're looking at resource protection, stormwater, land use, a lot of those components, I think, that tie into our primary responsibility and ability to supply. But obviously, we'll treat anything we have to to meet a regulation if it's a viable drinking water source, and we have done so. But I think that a lot of that sort of ancillary and sort of side stuff would definitely pay a benefit to the town in general. From the disparate district perspective, obviously, our mission is very focused and related to supply. But yeah, I think that it would pay a benefit to us in that degree and we certainly would be a willing participant in a meaningful study.
What we're looking at here is scenario planning, long-term scenario planning. Nobody really has a good idea for 50 years from now. And so it lays some basis for a future select board or commissioners to know how to act if there's a problem. And it's useful to take those long-term plans. I think the other thing we look to, a lot of this, is we have no enforcement powers. And a lot of the problems we are facing need some follow-up and cutting down. We can find people, we technically can't shut water off because of habitable nature. So a lot of times we're coming up, we've worked closely with the town for a long time on this. This is nothing new, but it's just getting us all talking together, working on the same page. And so we look forward to it. On the other side, of course, is we have to take anything like this to our voters. And so a firm proposal in terms of how much and how it's going to be spent would be a requirement before we can be involved financially in these kinds of things. I think the, I asked Matt if he went down to what they asked for, just four hours of time, would he be reducing the amount of time he spends with RAC? So I think the staff time, we're very supportive of the staff time side of it. And then when it comes time for outside consulting help, I think then it becomes a question that we have to figure out. We have to go to our voters for that side. That sort of thing we would go to our voters for.
At least the initial financial commitment that RAC was looking for was $50,000 and that was for outside consulting services. So it's, that's, I think, the magnitude of what we're, what we're talking about, at least near term.
John, to further answer your question, one of the things that we've discussed among ourselves, at public meetings, obviously, is that there are a lot of wild cards, a lot of unknowns with water. of unknowns with water. One we just discussed is, and we don't know that the town knows the answer either, is the T4 district. That's really unclear how that's going to be developed. We know what the potential is because we did a real back-of-the-envelope study of it to see how much water it might use if fully developed. And we did that by, actually, the Wilmac that I was on at one time. I think you've seen the study. Yeah, it would knock the water demand to the district way, way up if they really developed the T4. And that we used Nagog Park, the industrial park, as a model. And at that time, there was, there were no heavy users there. And we know, as you know, there's a very heavy water user in there now. But there's wild cards, there's developable, developable land in town. We don't know how that's going to go. There's all sorts of scenarios and wild cards that would be useful for us jointly, the town and the water district, to understand what the potential is, what the upside and the downside of that could be, not only for wastewater and water, both. And that's stuff that we have not studied, the wastewater usage and how wastewater could be reused, if at all, and how much water would be needed by some of these projects. So a joint understanding by both of us would probably be really helpful for a study like that. And that's one reason we'd like to see this go. And we've only seen the Phase 1 piece proposed. And it has an education piece, which we also think is probably good because one of the things that we found out at that joint, at that meeting that was held that Saturday was that there was a lot of lack of understanding of certain things, like for example, the water protection zones, which was clearly not very well understood by even many of the town staff that participated, they didn't understand it. And that's one of the things I think that the RAC proposes to work with the staff so they'll understand the need to protect those water protection zones. Because as was explained, we haven't got the enforcement power. We have to rely on town government to enforce all the water protection zones for us.
It's an interesting mix how this is set up. We're two separate entities and we have some enforcement. You're in charge of sourcing water and delivering water, and we have nothing to do with that.
No questions. Thank you.
You guys have mentioned enforcement a couple of times. Is there something you need that you're not getting?
I think from an enforcement perspective, there's not an imminent, I think, something on top of, right at my fingertips now, I can't think of anything that we need currently related to zoning enforcement. There are small things that come up, obviously, and it's difficult to maintain on touch what, you know, everything's going on in town all the time. We do try to communicate with the town staff and the correct departments if anything does come up that we do see flagged for potential negative impacts. We try to go through proper channels and take the, you know, the right path to try and get that corrected. That has transpired in the past and I think overall it's been relatively productive or has come to correct fruition. But nothing currently on the forefront of my mind that really that we need related to zoning enforcement.
I just have one comment to add to that, and that actually builds on Barry's comment about education as well. In the summary, the RAC indicated that they saw a link between enforcement and education. And I think we've done an excellent job at the district of educating our ratepayers on our aspect of water, all, everything that we do and what we need from them for us to be successful. And I think that potentially there could be some lessons learned for the water resources aspects that fall under the town, more aggressive education and outreach, sort of as was mentioned. There are other things outside of just supply and demand that fall under the Water Resources umbrella. And we can't see what everyone is doing at all times with their storm water and wastewater and things like that. And so getting people really on board with what the expectations are for the town and how that ties into the large Water Resources picture, I think, is an area where there would be room for us to maybe pass on some lessons learned, but also for the, maybe if I had an ask, it would be that there was a public emphasis on that from the town.
Well, I know I had Matt speak to the garden club one day, and he did a terrific job, but I was impressed with the number of questions that he received on different aspects of the whole water issue. And I was surprised at the lack of knowledge on the part of these gals who use water all the time to beautify the town. Other comments from the audience? Jim Rezertis face.
First of all, it's just amazing to see these two bodies talking to each other, and I hope it continues. There's, you know, I can already see there's been a bunch of, you know, learning and communication that is really important to move forward. I wanted to put on both of your, on your joint communications agendas, some of what I've learned from talking to staff on both sides about the WR Grace site and the future use of it. And that the planning from the point of view of the town is, appears inconsistent with the point of view of planning that the, how the water district sees that land. So I think there is some real important and relatively urgent communication that needs to happen, given that the Grace site is very close to being able to start considering development offers there. And under the current zoning, the technology district zoning, so obviously a lot of water implications there. The implication that I particularly want the town to understand is that the cleanup on that site continues for a long time, first with pumping, but then for a longer time after that with what they call, you know, attenuated cleanup. It's just the water flows the way it flows, the contaminants flow the way that they flow, and they slowly disperse. So it depends, and that depends on a stable and well-understood hydrogeology of the site. And if you start having uses of that site that are adding a lot of water to that site, wastewater, for example, you drastically, you can drastically change how the contaminants might be flowing, and you might be setting the cleanup at risk. So I think there's some relatively urgent conversation that needs to happen about institutional controls on that site, including zoning, but maybe other controls as well, to make sure that the future of that site is consistent with the future safety of our water. There are zone, the Zone 1 creeps up right to the edge of the WR Grace site, and plenty of Zone 2 is in there too. It's a, it's a critical site from a water protection point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? David?
Yes, I just wanted to, at the end here, make a comment. Having, you know, now, between the RAC presentation and today, I have read most of that big fat book, although online. And that, the book, among other things, and those, these sections are quite approachable if you want to read them, it goes into supply and demand, you know, or demand and supply in that order in the document. So it talks about, you know, possible growth scenarios and it talks about possible sources. What this means to me is that the RAC presentation that we had a little while ago went into both things, a little bit of supply and demand, although that was the emphasis that I heard, and then other things. The RAC proposal document includes outreach and awareness and environmental impacts of water, you know, groundwater and stormwater and other things. And it seems to me that that ought to be the emphasis of the RAC work. Because again, it doesn't make sense to me to duplicate this supply and demand thing. It might be good as a double check, but, you know, why would we duplicate this work that was already done by the water district? Just an impression.
Thank you. Yes, Kim?
Hi, I'm Kim Castens from Pope Road, and I just wanted to follow up on Dave's comment. And the, most of the demand forecasting that is in the five-year plan is based on population growth, which is a very sensible and legitimate way to move forward. But the town has the possibility to come at it from a different perspective, which is the zoning perspective. So the water district has no control over zoning whatsoever. The town controls that. And so you could come at the what-if planning from a different perspective, rather than taking population statistics that come from University of Massachusetts and other well-respected demographic sources, which is what the water district is able to do. The town could come at it from the perspective of zoning, you know. If we take our existing zoning and build it out, we could imagine, we could estimate how much water that would take. On the other hand, if we change the zoning of the technical district to be something else, that would take a different amount of water. If we change the zoning of some other place to be something else, that would take a different amount of water. So there's a whole different strategy with a whole different set of underlying assumptions that the town can feed into what-if planning that the water district can't do because they don't do zoning. That's not within their control. So if you, you know, it's another way of approaching it. And it's a town-specific approach that guides the future decisions of the town decision-makers, the town people who are in charge of land use in the town. So the water district doesn't get to control land use that's in the town. The town government has much more control over that. So that would be the kind of what-if scenario planning that could be done by a joint effort that can't easily be done by the water district alone because it's out of their bellywhip.
Thank you.
Mind if I just comment?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't mind that at all. I would call that vision, right? And that makes sense to me. What I'm just trying to say is it doesn't make sense to duplicate what's in the document, right? To either spend money or time producing the supply detail, which is done excellently, I think, in the master plan, or the detail of the demand forecast. But the vision, I have no problem with.
Anyone else? Well, as someone who stood on the Grace property at midnight and watched that styrene venting and called for an evacuation of 1,200 people, that site is very much in my mind. I want to thank the water commissioners and RAC members for coming in tonight and being willing to share with us your thoughts. And the board will have a discussion on this at the next available time.
Well, thank you for having us. We look forward to working together, and I think we're all members of each other's community. So we might as well work together and enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go back to the agenda.
Before we move on to the next item, we, I don't think we quite finished the conversation on the dog park and what our next steps are. So it's only there was general support, you know, for the, or support across the board for the dog park. It's a question of which site you want to use. And the seemingly preferred site was the DPW area. And the question that I would have is, can we, John, can we get a recommendation from town staff as to if we use, is it 1.3 acres plus another 0.7 acres, a total of probably two acres? Can they continue to function with the loss of that?
Yes, we can prepare comments for the next time that you want to discuss this matter. Absolutely.
And an estimate of cost on moving the loam?
We can come up with something.
Well, it's a range of things that are done on that site. And if they lose two acres, how are they going to make up for that and, you know, continue to, you know, do what they've been doing so we don't have to go on the outside and, you know, buy stuff that we're already, you know, taking care of in-house? So, you know, be specific and, you know, don't hesitate in making a recommendation that says, no, we don't want to give up this site for a dog park.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, just to amplify that a little bit, I think it's, you know, there is some additional land that's available to the north of the present DPW yard, but I think it's constrained somewhat by grade changes and it's heavily forested. So, you know, I appreciate that the dog park people don't want to cut down any more trees than they have to, but effectively, you're going to, if we lose two acres that are already cleared and already being used and we have to replace it, it's going to be two acres of woods that are going to have to be removed to the north area. Also, the, as they pointed out in their presentation, there's going to have to be considerable tree cutting in order to provide a parking area for this dog park, if it's put in the DPW area. So I think everybody has to look at it right up front, that there's going to be tree removal, there's going to be an environmental impact of that. I'm not as concerned with the loss of tree cover. Frankly, considering 150 years ago, 90% of the town was pasture and cropland, and trees do grow back. But I think that it's important that we look at all of these impacts. And certainly, if there's got to be a case made for tree removal or whatever environmental impact, it should be made by the dog park people. And public works operations should not always have to be basically the caboose on this train. I think that we need to be very upfront about the fact that, you know, this is critical infrastructure. The loss of that site is going to impact every single public works operation. It's going to impact the cost of all of our operations. It's going to impact certainly the green composting operation. And so I think that, you know, it behooves the dog park people to be able to justify their site. You know, I would expect that the folks to the north of the site that were supportive of this location might not be quite so supportive if they realize that a couple of acres of trees are going to be removed approaching her property and that all of this operation, you know, heavy-duty gravel processing, operation of heavy equipment, is going to be that much closer to their property. And I think the other thing we should look at is that if you try to co-locate this dog park with the public works operation, there's a lot of times when the heavy-duty equipment, certainly 40 hours a week, is running there, and it makes it less than a desirable dog park location. And a lot of those loam piles and gravel piles are there right now are vegetated, but from time to time, they have to take the vegetation off in order to move material off there. And you get a lot of blowing dust and that sort of thing. So it's not a great location. So I'd be interested to see what the real public works folks, not necessarily the land use director or the natural resource director, think about these things, but the folks that actually have to deal with these very real-life problems every day, how is that going to impact their work? Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. I'd also be interested if town staff have any comments or recommendation on their secondary site. And for me, as I said during the other discussion, I'm going to go visit, I'm not sure I can locate the secondary site very well. I mean, I can locate, I know where it is approximately, but I don't know where it is exactly. I mean, the other one, I know where it is. But I don't, I might actually walk back into the DPW yard because I've never been in the, in the back of that, but.
Okay. Peter?
I, I was just going to quickly say, I thought it was an interesting comment asking about the legal approvals for this proposal, you know, how, how deep the support in the town really is. And, and I actually would feel a little uncomfortable, I think, turning over two acres without some kind of, of a town meeting vote. I presume if they go to the CPC and the CPC moves a proposal forward to town meeting, that would be approval to dispose of the land or not dispose of it, but to change it and turn it into a dog park as opposed to using it for its current use or whatever other use it might be available for if it's available. So I would like to see some kind of town meeting, you know, involvement in this process.
Okay.
What would the, the question, that, one of the two questions we were asked is to approve a site. Is that what, are we legally obligated to do that? What's your sense, Peter?
Well, we created-
I mean, I, the town manager may have a better, I'm sorry. Did you want to say-
No, I was going to say, the Board of Selectmen created this-
Committee.
Committee to advise, come back and advise us on how to move forward with the dog park.
Right. I mean, I don't think legally, I think we could say, yeah, use the site for the dog park. I mean, I don't know any legal, it's not like a change of use or, it wasn't dedicated for DPW. I think it's probably general town land, right? So.
To, generally to answer your question, I think there are some questions of exactly the process that we would follow, and it's unique to the property that is selected. So I think the first, I mean, other than major obstacles, the first thing we want to know is which site we're talking about, and then we can identify the exact process and lay it out for you. But generally, CPC would require a CPC vote at town meeting, definitely. And in terms of how land is used, that, that decision can be made, depending on how the process was initially required, we have to review that. So these are all things that we could certainly delve into, but we tend to not want to go too far until we know there's momentum for one site so that we can use our resources effectively.
Well, seldom recommended, these sites.
Mm-hmm. No, I think, no, I think there's, they, on the surface appear to be not as complicated as, certainly as acquiring land privately or other sites that maybe have very specific other uses. So I can provide that to you all as part of the comments that we're preparing, sort of an overview of any legal process that may be required, if, other than a typical one.
Well, one of the things that I asked them, and I should have asked you, or maybe this could be part of the, the report, is, and this goes to Peter's question as well, I mean, I think there's a town meeting vote if there's any kind of appropriation for this. So, for example, if we had to clear two acres of land at the top of the property and that costs $20,000 to get a tree contractor in, that's an appropriation, which is probably a town meeting vote. But, you know, if it's all, if the land is all suitable and everything's covered by, by, by their funding, I think the only thing is the CPC vote.
Okay. So should we hold on the dog license until we come up with an agreement on the land?
I, I would be interested to see if, they seem to be proposing that this be create, be rolled into some sort of a revolving fund. And I'd be interested in, you know, is this going to be a sub-account under the recreational revolving fund? Or is it, does it create its own? Is there a legal precedent for this? Is it even legally possible to do this? I, you know, it sounds like a great idea, but I know municipal finance law gets pretty complicated when it comes to setting up these funds.
I assume that the current dog license goes just into the general revenue funds. They're not set aside for any-
That's my understanding, yes.
As I mentioned to them, I, you know, even though other towns like Chelmsford said that's what they pay, I'm a little suspicious that it only takes $4,000 a year to maintain myself. And before we would set such a fee increase, I would like a little documentation on what it would cost to maintain the, the park. Because I don't want it to be a drain on the recreation funds, especially if it's significantly more. I mean, if it's $4,500, I'm not worried about the $500. But if it's $8,000 or $12,000 a year, I would be, you know, concerned about that. So, and I, I think, you know, I think if it's a revolving fund, you also have to build up a little thing. So they also talked about using some kind of mulch instead of grass. Well, the mulch doesn't last forever. I don't know, three years, five years? And, you know, and then what does it cost to re-mulch it? And you, so you need to build up some money, sorry, you need to build up some money in the revolving fund. So it's not just a matter of how much does it cost to plow this year and, and fix the fences this year.
John?
So I just, those are all things that I'm happy to look further into and report back. I think the sense that I got from the presentation is that they were requesting to have the board make a decision before the CPC application deadline occurs, which I'm just double-checking right now. But I believe it's in November?
I believe it's around the 15th of November.
Right. So I think, given this presentation of the two recommended, recommended options, I think that provides some time for us at the staff level to report back to the board on some of the questions that were raised by each of you and some of the public, in time for you to make a decision before that November deadline.
And dog license fee notification goes out?
That I don't have with me.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. Okay. Are we through with the dogs? Draft warrant article to change the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. Who wants to lead that discussion?
I was one of the, yeah, I'm sorry.
One of the three members who voted for the change of name. I, again, believe that the, the term Board of Selectmen is just an antiquated, uh-uh, you know, term. Over 80 communities within the Commonwealth have moved towards the term Select Board. A number of cities, Newton being among them, have changed their Board of Aldermen to a city council. So it, the question for me, where I'd like to have a link with the past, is if we can keep the, change it to Select Board, but in saying, saying Select Board Member, keep the term and make it gender-specific, either Select Man or Select Woman. Because I think that's what people are going to call it anyway. In these, in these towns where they have gone to city counselors, city, it's the city council, they don't call themselves counselors, they call themselves councilman, councilwoman. But I, I think we're going to, I don't mind a connection with the past, and I think that's what they're going to call us anyway, Select Man, Select Woman, but we can call ourselves Select Board.
Yes. David?
So I, I don't mind doing that informally, but in the, the document that Nina's proposed here and the, and the article, I think the legal language has to be member. I mean, throughout all the town charter and everything else, we're not saying Select Man slash Woman. It's, it's, it's too awkward and inappropriate. It, it needs to be, in my opinion, member. Now, informally, I have no problem with us being called Select Man and Select Woman, same as Congressman and Congresswoman. I mean, but I, I think in the legal document, it has to be as, as Nina proposed. Peter, do you have any, the legal perspective?
From a legal perspective, I, I really don't. And, you know, personally, I'm, I, I don't feel really strongly one way or the other. We have had some comments about the historical nature of the term Selectmen and how people feel it ought to stay that way. I'd leave it up to town meeting, frankly. I, I don't think I agree that calling, calling ourselves Select Woman or Select Man is necessary. I think member's fine, but, you know, I, I, to me, I'd just leave this up to town meeting and let them decide. I guess that depends on how we write the warrant article, but I would leave it member if it was up to me.
This is my 12th year as a Select Man. And I've been very proud to be a Selectman in the town of Acton. And I think Select Board sounds like something you'd buy at Lowe's lumberyard. Okay.
So if we, if we move forward, this would have to pass twice, once at town meeting and then once at the annual town election. So it can be put on the special town meeting warrant on December 10th? And then assuming it passes with, it would be a two-thirds vote because it's a charter change, then it would go on the, the March town election ballot? Would that be?
Yeah, so the, it could go, it could go on the annual town meeting warrant as well, but in that case, it would have to wait a year for the next annual town election because it happens in March. So you, the board could choose to do either add it to special or have it on the annual and just understand that it takes an extra year.
I thought we closed the warrant for the special?
Yeah. It was been closed for-
Citizen petitions.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I did have a little concern about being on a special town meeting warrant. We have such, such high-level issues already on the warrant. To add this to the warrant-
Oh, yeah.
Seems to me, I understand the reason it would be on, and so we could vote on it in the spring. But I have no problem with putting it on the regular annual town meeting in the spring. And, and if it means we got to wait another year to have an election on it, I'm okay with that.
Do you think it'd be a problem as the last article? I mean, I, I can't see that being, I mean, I don't see this as being a huge amount of discussion. I mean, I mean, people are going to vote how they're going to vote. But I don't see this as being a hu, a huge amount of discussion.
Oh, I do.
It seems to me, rather than making it a, you know, a 15 or 18-month process, we could make it a six-month process. That would be my preference.
We don't have to make a decision tonight?
Well, I, I think Nina's looking for us to agree with her line, proposed language.
So I take it the sense of the group is to go, if going forward, if this is, to use Nina's language, it would be, it would be Select Board and Member.
Yes. And I wanted to make it clear that I think it's awkward to have a slashed term in the town charter. I have no problem at all if we, we prefer to be called Select Man and Select Woman like Congressman and Congresswoman. But, but I think in, but I bet you, in congressional documents, it says Member of Congress or Member of the House. It doesn't say in the, in the documents Congressman slash Congressman.
I think you're right, yeah.
So I, I completely agree with Nina's proposed language, and I, I agree with the, the timeframe. I'm happy to make a motion if people want me to-
Please.
Go ahead.
I move, we go with the, or, I'm sorry, I move with it. We use the recommended language from town council regarding the change from Board of Selectmen to Select Board, and that we have the town meeting vote in the December special town meeting and the ballot vote in the annual town election at the end of March.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four? Nay. Motion carries four to one. Intermunicipal agreement for the building inspectional services for the town of Littleton. John?
Thank you. We have been meeting with the town administrator in Littleton. They have a longtime building commissioner who has just retired, and they're in the process of hiring another one. And they've, they've asked if we would provide some assistance on a temporary basis for a few months as needed. And I was hoping to have a final form of a draft municipal agreement, intermunicipal agreement for you to consider tonight. But I have, still have some things that we're thinking about. But if, the general terms that we're contemplating are that we would use our existing staff to provide some help with plan review and inspections for a few hours a week, not a huge time commitment, and it would be at, not at the detriment to any services that are necessary here, and they would understand that. And it'll be part of the agreement. We would charge a fixed fee per hour, and that fee would be, including administrative overhead costs that are more than just our staff's time, whether it be regular overtime. So it's similar to, in structure, to what we looked at for Boxboro with the Veterans Agreement. But it's meant to be not as long of a term. So if the board has specific questions about the concept or concerns about the concept, it would be great to have a discussion about that. If there's general consensus that you would be comfortable moving forward with this on a temporary basis and would allow me to do so without going back, that would work too. Whatever is the pleasure of the board.
On the inspection service, are you in favor of moving forward with it?
The inspection service?
Peter?
You're looking for approval to just go ahead and sign the agreement?
I think, I think the, a member of the board has to sign it. But I think if you're comfortable with the general concept of providing this to the town of Littleton on an interim, temporary basis for hours not to exceed 15 in a week, that's sort of the framework that we're working within. And if that's enough of, of information to, for have you support that, or knowing that it would be finalized by town council and myself, then I'd ask you to consider that. Otherwise, I'm happy to bring it back again in a few weeks.
Okay. So this is, I'm sorry, until they hire a new builder?
So, yeah, so they're, they are starting the process of hiring right now, and that could take most likely months rather than weeks. And in the meantime, they need some assistance, just doing some plan reviews and making sure that things don't get too stalled with, with permitting in, in Littleton.
Okay. I'm okay with it.
David? Yeah? This is to-
The interview with-
Yeah. Okay. So I think the board supports your moving forward with this. Do you need a motion?
Yeah, it would be great to authorize maybe you to sign on behalf of the board under terms that are finalized with town council.
Okay. I'll make that motion that we authorize the chair to sign the intermunicipal agreement with Littleton as prepared by town council and the town manager to provide inspectional services for a period of time until Littleton is able to get a new building inspector on board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, North Acton Fire Station.
So, as part of keeping the board informed on the status of the project on a regular basis, this is just another project update. We are planning to make a presentation to the Finance Committee tomorrow night with some details about the cost estimate and some of the other questions that have come up regarding the cost of the project. We did finalize the two schematic design estimates and reconciled them and analyzed soft costs. The project budget has come in, and it's slightly higher than we were hoping to have it come in at 10.9, but we believe that the number has an appropriate number of contingencies in it that would allow us to still move forward with our plan, which was programmed into the FY '20 budget, to seek a vote of approximately 9.5 million for the fire station. So, where the work that we'll do now is to further refine costs to feel comfortable moving forward with a number, and we'll go into greater detail on that tomorrow night at the Finance Committee. But just to give you just a general sense of some of the cost-driving factors, I think I mentioned in a memo or some other communication, the construction industry itself has seen a lot of escalation higher than certainly was anticipated when the project was first approved for design a few years ago. There's some other, we've really taken the Board of Selectmen's environmental sustainability policy into account in this design project, and although we would certainly include green and sustainable design elements into the project regardless, we're trying to hit a standard that we believe is responsive to that policy, not having natural gas, for example, trying to use a geothermal, things like that have added to the cost. But we believe it's a priority based on the board's policy directive to include those. So, we're going to go into more detail on that tomorrow night, but just wanted to give you a general sense. We did the design for the concept for the exterior. We got some great feedback from the Design Review Board. The Design Review Board said, you know, some suggestions on the materials and other things that we're going to try to work into the plan, and the floor plan, we're trying to maintain. So, one of the things that we're going to try to do over the next few months in reducing our, you know, value engineering is we'll look at bidding alternates, ways to bid the project that allow us to still get the building but maybe not fit it out entirely. For example, we're building the building to last 50 years, but we may not need a full locker room to fully staff it the way we would 25 years from now, so maybe we'll build the locker room for our five-year needs. You know, little things like that, that if we do them across the building, it'll add up, and we're working on that now, but I just wanted to give you that update. We posted a frequently asked questions document on the fire station website, actonma.gov/firestation. Some of the questions that we received from the public forums were the basis for that information. We're holding another public forum on the 18th of this month. There's another meeting going on in this building, so we're going to be holding at the Public Safety Facility. I think that there'll be a big presentation tomorrow night, and then that will be in about a week from now, but we think it's important to try to get as many opportunities for the public to learn about this project and ask questions about this project as possible. So, we'll be doing a lot of publicity about that next forum, starting tomorrow.
Good.
Question?
Yeah?
So, you said the number was...
You're sure?
I'm sorry. Was it 11.9 million? 10.9, okay. In putting the other piece of the outreach together with Dean and Sahana Kurat and Lauren Rosenzweig-Morton, we were getting two sets of questions that I think the board, in conjunction with John, needs to take up and have some discussion on and take a position. One question that we get is if we're building another station, will we be increasing staff and what's that all going to cost? And in the frequently asked questions, the Fire Department has expressed the need to increase staffing, but for the time being, we can staff the new station and continue to staff the old station with the same number of people. But I think the intention would be, over time, budget considerations in mind, that we would increase staffing throughout. The second question that I, we get a lot of questions on, if we're going to build a fourth, if we're going to build a new North Acton station, will we be closing one of the three old stations? And, you know, what station is that going to be? You can't, we can't simply say that, well, it's under consideration, we don't know. We've got to be more specific and direct in reply. And my personal view is, as this is all, you know, based on response times to calls, and 90% of these calls are medical-related, that, you know, the response time is critical, and I think we have to look at the idea of maintaining four stations in the town because anybody's, well, if you close the South Acton station, how is that going to increase the response time to my neighborhood or West Acton or Acton Center? So, that's a discussion I think we have to have. I'd like to put it on in two weeks or when we meet again. And, you know, the board, in conjunction with John, as a matter of policy, is going to have to take a position because those are the hard questions that we're going to get, and if we have fluffy answers, I think we're going to lose votes on this because people are going to want to know, you know, what's your plan? My personal view is, you know, I think we should have four stations, you know, that's equity. It reflects an aging town population who are generally in need of emergency services from time to time, and, you know, that also leaves open, you know, the broader question of we're going to probably have to update some of the older stations, and that's going to be an added cost, and that should be gotten out there as well.
Well, last time we tried this, 40 years ago, we bought the land at 2A and 27, and the idea was to close this center fire station, and that was defeated at town meeting. So, I think you're right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to back up what Selectman Benson said.
Member.
Okay, as you wish. Selectman.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, I think we do have to, you know, deal with these things head-on. You know, in addition to 40 years ago, 15 or 20 years ago, we dealt with the same sort of thing, this fear that we were going to close stations. I think we really need to have some sort of a coherent plan, where we're going to go move forward, not only as far as the number of stations, but certainly staffing patterns, you know, for the next five or 10 years. That's kind of a big push between now and two weeks hence, but I think that it's important that we start thinking about this, and, you know, maybe it's something that's going to have to be discussed in our, in our meeting in May, you know, to give you some direction as far as budgeting and that sort of thing. But I think it's definitely, we need to have some of those answers, and we certainly need to have at least a preliminary answer in the next month or two as we do this outreach because these are persistent questions that, you know, if we don't have any kind of an answer, at least the board, I think, should show some leadership in this regard, or else we'll be in a lot of trouble on this project.
Okay. Anything else on the fire station? Community Compact Agreement Best Practices Program.
Thank you. The town of Acton has participated in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Community Compact Program in the past, and I've asked Austin Saganowicz to make a brief presentation, given the timing, just about why we think it's important for the town to participate in this program again this year.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I'll try to reduce my prepared speech. As you know, one of the first executive orders prepared by Governor Baker in 2015 was the Community Compact Cabinet, which, as a former selectman, along with Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito, another selectman in Shrewsbury, recognizing from the top down, there needs to be a partnership from the state level to partner with communities. So, they started this Community Compact Cabinet. In 2017, Acton was a recipient of a Community Compact Best Practices Program for the award-winning Crosstown Connect Program, and since then, actually, every community in the Commonwealth has signed at least one Community Compact with the administration. So, what we're looking for this year is to essentially fulfill the goals enacted by the Select Board or Board of Selectmen, as well as the environmental sustainability policy also adopted by this board in December of 2018. So, what we're looking for is to submit an application for a Best Practices Program for an energy and environmental sustainability program. One of the documents I gave you actually lists all of the suggested or recommended best practices. There's a long list there. This program has actually grown over the years. I think when they first started this, they didn't really know how successful this program was going to be. It's really grown into its own. Lots of money from the budget is dedicated each year for this program. So, each year within, each, every two years, you're allowed to submit an application to enact two best practices. So, the list that I provided you, you'll notice there are three or four highlighted best practices, which in analyzing the sustainability policy as well as your yearly goals, the goals that we highlighted, the best practices that we highlighted, you know, overlap fairly well with your, with your goals. But really, what we're looking for is just to kind of present this to you. The good thing about this program is there's no deadline, whereas some other grant programs, there's some deadlines that are actually coming up fairly soon. We can submit the application at any point. That is until the Community Compact funds run out, so I suggest probably sooner rather than later, we submit an application. But we wanted to present this to you, either for some feedback informational purposes and just kind of let you know, there's actually some interesting best practices that also sort of overlap with projects. You mentioned the North Acton Fire Station project. There's actually a best practice that also, under the Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy, best practice, construct zero-energy buildings to eliminate GHG emissions, I don't know what that means, reduce costs and increase resiliency. So, you know, whether it's a best practice like that, there's also a best practice to install solar charging stations for electric vehicles, which is, I know is also one of the policies in the energy sustainability policies. So, really, what we're looking for is feedback from this board and just to present this to you, you know, for informational purposes. This is something that we're looking into over the next couple of weeks.
So, you've highlighted four?
Yes.
And you want feedback from us?
I'm not sure exactly, do we need an answer tonight, John? No, not, we don't need, if any of these jump out at you, what we'd like to do is select two. So, if any of these jump out at you and you want us to include those, we're also going to be discussing with staff over the next few weeks, just to see if any projects that we have align with these. But, you know, initially, we think that the yellow ones are clearly close to some things we're working on, but you may see some of other ones that you want us to consider. So, I think what we'd like to do is bring this back at a future meeting and have you vote at that time, but just wanted to get it in front of you now as the first step.
Okay.
And if I may, one thing to add, not only when we enact these best practices and when this grant is awarded, also, not only does grant funding typically come with an application, a successful application, but really technical assistance from the state level. This also increases your ability or potential to receive additional grants if you're a Community Compact community, if you're signed on to the Community Compact community program. That also gives you bonus points for additional grant applications as well.
Dean?
Yeah, I think just, GHG is greenhouse gas.
Good to know.
But I think, you know, obviously, the fourth highlighted bullet here for plant trees strikes a chord with me. And I do have quite a bit of experience with tree retention bylaws, and I think that's a, that's a dead end you don't want to go down, in my opinion, but I think, you know, whatever we can do as far as encouraging municipal planting and private planting of trees, and I know the Department of Conservation Recreation has some pretty good programs, and now that we're, once now, have, once more have a tree warden, I think that that makes us eligible for some grants that we were not eligible for for the last two years. So, certainly, I'd encourage you to look towards that. Thank you.
John?
No.
Peter?
I would ask you to try to bring this, these ideas to the Green Advisory Board as well. They meet, actually, on the same night that we do, so, but they meet at 6:30, so I don't know if you can get them, get to them, assuming it's coming back here in a couple of weeks before we look at this again, but certainly, they've been urging the town to put into facilities to use, to allow electric vehicles to charge, and I think we've gotten grants from the state to do that, so that's something we're already doing. Any expanding net is, makes all the sense in the world, I think. I'm not sure I know what becoming a solarized mass or solarized mass-plus community is, so whatever standards we would have to meet to achieve that goal, be helpful to know, but certainly, you know, given our sustainability policy and the entire sense of very strong feelings in town about dealing with climate change, dealing with environmental issues, we're going to support this.
I will say, the administration has also done a fantastic job of maintaining the Community Compact webpage. Not only do they update it every year for the grant application, but they also, you know, provide historical information for prior community compacts that have been signed by other communities. So, when you, if you were to, you know, click to the Energy and Environment page, it actually, you know, lists all the other communities that have adopted these best practices, and they actually provide a report with some interesting and detailed analysis that I think we can also reference when we're applying for this as well.
Okay. Go.
Thank you. Thank you, nice job. So, we'll come back.
Yeah. And MIPC, Magic C?
So, we'll, I'm going to ask Austin to also help present this one, and we'll make it brief, but the Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization, we're familiar with, they're helping us with Kelly's Corner, and this is an opportunity for us to take a larger role in that effort. So, if you could provide some background, please?
Absolutely. This is something that actually is really exciting me to speak to you about. When I started, I'm actually just over two months on the job now. When I started, one of my goals, actually, that John gave me was to attend regional meetings. And Acton is a Magic community, but also a Boston Region NPO Metropolitan Planning Organization This is one of the most influential planning and transportation organizations in the Commonwealth. You know, folks from Mastiot, MBTA, City of Boston, other influential communities have a say for a monthly meeting for the future of transportation and planning in the region. Acton has been an active member of Magic, that's the Minuteman Advisory Group on Inter-local Coordination, a lot of acronyms in transportation and planning. The NPO, really, their required charges are to prepare sort of three significant documents every year or every five years, depending on what the document is. That's the long-range... The NPO, really their required charges are to prepare sort of three significant documents every year or every five years, depending on what the document is. That's the Long Range Transportation Plan or the Long Term Transportation Plan Document, Transportation Improvement Plan Document, which is a five-year plan, at which the Kelly's Corner Project was most recently voted on the tip, on the Transportation Improvement Plan, and the Unified Planning Work Program. So all of these are sort of either data analysis, research, or in the form of funding. Most notably, the tip is $95 million each year that's dedicated to, dedicated to the region every year. So what we're looking, what we're looking for is every fall, the NPO elects a, four municipal seats, and one of those seats is a Magic seat. As I mentioned, Acton is heavily involved in Magic. Historically, there's been an age-friendly transportation program, agricultural study, regional housing initiative, all through Magic, and Acton has either been a lead community or has been actively involved in all of those efforts. Additionally, regarding transportation, Acton is the lead agent and lead community for Crosstown Connect. We, not only do we manage sort of all the funding that comes through, but any sort of services that are provided, not only to Acton but regional initiative, Acton is at the table. So for the past 10 years, the town of Bedford has held the Magic seat. I think they've done, I think they've done a fantastic job. They've done a fine job. But I think we're coming to a point now where Acton, we're already a lead community. I think we are capable of being supportive to the region. I think all the problems, all the issues that we face in Acton, we also face in Littleton, Westford, surrounding Magic communities. Managers also had an opportunity to have a conversation with Bedford. Bedford has also reached, offered the opportunity to either share the seat or, you know, also the opportunity for us to, you know, take advantage and take leadership of that role. So what we're looking for, it's actually a pretty quick process. The election is actually held October 30th. What we would need to do is prepare a statement of candidacy and essentially nominate the executive of the town. That would be the chair of the Select Board or the Board of Selectmen, and then their designee would attend these meetings. So it's a pretty quick turnover. If we were to endorse this candidacy, we also, there's some political efforts in terms of reaching out to fellow Magic communities for their endorsement, for their support, and then, as I mentioned, an election to be held at the end of October.
So are you interested in being a candidate? For the Magic seat? Is the question?
As long as I have good help.
And I will say, just to add, planning, the planning staff already attends these meetings. I've attended since I've started in Acton, I've attended these meetings. This is just an opportunity to have a voice, as I mentioned, I'm one of the most influential planning and transportation organizations. I think if we don't win the election, I think we also have still a close partner in Bedford who, as I mentioned, is still willing to share the responsibilities. I'm not sure if there's anything to lose.
All right. Is there a motion?
Hold on. I have some questions. Who's our current rep on the Magic, in the Magic? It used to be Franny or Mike Owling, I think. I mean, who's doing that now?
Sure. So right now, it's Franny still.
Okay.
But the Magic rep on the NPO board is the town of Bedford.
Right.
Their former town manager.
And who votes for that? Do Magic members vote to send their rep to the NPO?
No, so if we were to, you know, go forward with our candidacy and the nominations are fulfilled, in October, it's actually all 97 members of the NPO that would vote on this.
Okay. And how do you share a seat? I mean, that doesn't sound like it's workable to me.
Yeah, I'm actually not sure either.
I think it's more of a, I think we try to establish close relationships with our fellow communities in Bedford as, is willing to continue in the role. They're also willing to, when they say share, they mean allow us to try to take the lead and they would be supportive. And I think it's a great gesture. I think, as Austin mentioned, if it doesn't work out, I think they would allow us the opportunity to share with them as well. So it's technically not shared, but I think functionally or informally, we'll share it.
No, I think it'd be great to have a seat on the NPO. That's a heavy time commitment too, but I'm all in favor of it, so.
So do you need a motion, Sean?
Yes, please.
We're nominating someone for, someone specific for the seat?
It has to be the chair of the selectman.
Okay.
I believe.
The chair can nominate a designee to serve if we get elected. If we get elected.
So just go ahead then and make the proper version.
I move that we authorize the town to move forward with whatever needs to be done to put Acton as up for election for the Magic seat on the NPO. Does that do it?
Is there a second?
Second.
Comment? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, are we on to the consent items?
This will take a while.
Do you have anything else, Sean? Okay. Consent items. 11. Avalon Acton Phase Two Regulatory Agreement. 12. Meeting Minutes. June 28th and August 5th, 2019. 13. Executive Session Minutes. May 6th and 20th, June 13th, 26th and 28th, and July 1st, 2019. Amendment to S.P.S.P. Number 10/01/2018. 471 Decision. Household Goods. 530 Main Street. 15. Building Permit Refund Request. Hussein Jokar.
If you could hold that just.
Okay. 16. Conflict of Interest Disclosure. Austin Saganowicz.
Can we hold that too, please?
Yep. 17. Street Use Permit Request. Ride to Defeat ALS. September 22nd, 2019. 18. Eagle Scout Court of Honor. Winston Thompson and Yuda Aoki. September 29th, 2019. 19. Committee Appointment. Joanna Bostetta, Full Member, Board of Health. Term to expire June 30th, 2022. Item 20. Committee Appointment. Franny Osman. Full Member, Commission on Disability. Term to expire June 30th, 2021. Item 21. Committee Appointment. Joan Burrows. Full Member, Commission on Disability. Term to expire June 30th, 2022. Item 22. Committee Appointment. Pasha Kokis. Associate Member, Commission on Disability. Term to expire June 30th, 2022. 23. Committee Appointment. Jim Snyder Grant. Associate Member, Commission on Disability. Term to expire June 30th, 2022. Item 24. Committee Appointment. Arthur Levens. Full Member, Historic District Commission. Term to expire June 30th, 2022. 25. 2019 Proclamation of Arbor Day. September 23rd, 2019.
Hold.
26. Accept Gift. Acton Police Department for $5,000 to provide programs that make a difference within the community. 27. Accept Gift. Acton Fire Department for $5,000 to provide programs that make a difference within the community. 28. Accept Gift. Recreation Department for $25 solicited by Jones Renovation Committee from Norman Preventia and Barbara Langford for funding a new recreation facility and playground at Jones Field. 29. Accept Gift. Recreation Department from Dr. Margaret Rudgard Bradley for $25 solicited by the Jones Renovation Committee for funding a new recreation facility and playground at Jones Field. 30. Accept Gift. Natural Resources for $275 from Stephen Goulette. That's his Eagle Scout fundraiser to be used toward future conservation land projects. 31. One-Day Alcoholic Beverage License. Neshoba Valley Neighbors Club, Nagark Woods Clubhouse. October 26th, 2019. 32. One-Day Alcoholic Beverage License. Concord River Financial, 40 Nagark Park. September 10th, 2019. 33. One-Day Alcoholic Beverage License. Rebecca Madden, Narrow Park. August 24th, 2019. 34. One-Day Alcoholic Beverage License. Ironworks Farm in Acton Incorporated. 128 Main Street. October 5, 2019. 35. Request for waiver of fees. Ironworks Farm in Acton Inc. for a one-day alcoholic beverage license. 36. One-Day Alcoholic Beverage License. Sisterhood Congregational Beth Elheim. 133 Prospect Street. September 22nd, 2019. 37. Request for waiver of fee. Sisterhood Congregation, old Beth Elheim for a one-day alcoholic beverage license. 38. Request for extension of operating hours. Red Raven. November 27 and December 31, 2019. So the first motion would be to accept items 11 through 14. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded for items 11 through 14. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Building permit. Who held that?
I did. I was just a little confused. I had read the materials. It seems that an individual who was going to buy a house in town, in the process of going through that process, put in a building permit request for a new roof on the house he didn't own, and then the deal fell through and he wants his...
Lisa.
He wants his, want me to say this, start over again? Begin it again?
Yes.
Okay. As I read through the materials, it was an individual who was going to buy a house in town. He put in a request for a building permit to put a new roof on his house, paid the building, the permit fee. His deal to purchase the house collapsed. He didn't go forward with it. He wants his building permit fee back. And from the Acton Building Division, there's a specific rule that says permit fees are not reimbursable, not transferable, nor does payment guarantee issuance of a building permit. I think the gentleman is looking for a refund of his permit, but it, that's not consistent with our rules. Is that what this is about, Sean?
That is accurate, yes. It's a policy of the department to not refund in that situation.
So what we're voting on then is not to refund the permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, I got it.
That's the actual right.
Yeah, we need to understand this, whether the motion is positive or negative. Make sure we're clear.
Okay, so the, the, the motion is negative, he doesn't get it, it's no, he doesn't get his refund. Is that correct, Sean?
I think, but I think, I think what you're referring to is the way it's written on the agenda. I think if we just clarify in a new motion, what the action the board recommends, and which in this case, I believe, is to not approve a refund.
Okay, so I would move then that we do not approve the building permit refund for Mr. Joe Jokar. J-O-W-K-A-R.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 16. You held that one, Peter?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, it's not clear who ClearGov Inc. is and what kind of services they provide to the town. Doesn't, just it talks about them as a vendor and what do they do?
So it's actually a sneak preview into something we're rolling out this year. It's a, it's a website that provides data and transparency elements regarding town finances. We're still, it's still in development, but we're, we were working on that and it happened to be where he used to work, but that's why he's filing the disclosure, just to make sure that's, there was nothing, they had nothing to do with each other, it was just a coincidence.
Okay. Thank you. I'm fine with it.
Okay. So the motion, the next motion would be items 16 through 24. Is there a motion?
Move to approve consent items 16 through 24.
Is there?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now who, did you hold the Arbor Day, Dean?
Yes. I just want to acknowledge and thank the town manager for his leadership in, the Arbor Day is kind of a big deal. Does seem a little odd to have it in September, but it's certainly allowable. I've spoken to some state folks about it and it does, it's a requirement in order to requalify as a Tree City USA, which the board has spoken about in the past, and I'd like to thank the town manager for getting it on here.
Okay. So we can proceed?
Yep.
Okay. So items 25 through 38. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion is passed unanimously.
Move to adjourn.
Is there any further business or do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. We are the survivors.